So it's six thirty and we'll call the meeting to order. Matt is not going to be here tonight, so I'll be sitting as in his place. So, um, Matt Yedden is excused, Susan Wood, myself, here. John Crist?
Here.
Phil Lamorrow?
Here.
Michael Bouchard?
Here.
Molly McCann?
Here.
Neil McIver?
Present.
Alternate Zach Tyrell and Brad Puffer.
Yep.
Judy Barrett, present.
Hi Judy.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So good to see you.
Good to see you too. Okay, so the review of the minutes.
I wanted to say thank you for including the comment about the humorous exchanges.
Humor, that's cute.
And I also wanted to say, in a very non-substantive world, that there is a presumably typo where class six became class four.
Yes, several times.
The V and the I got switched.
One, two, three, four.
If we're in Vermont, it would be okay.
Five times.
We're not though.
But we're not.
You are not there.
Yeah, not a lot of class four roads in town.
What's that?
Not a lot of class four roads in New Hampshire generally.
Interesting.
It's pretty impressive, I like did it wrong consistently.
Yeah.
It happens.
Who knows, you did it correctly many times as well. Yeah.
Those Roman numerals are a holdover from when they chiseled them into stone. It was easier to make straight lines than curves.
Makes sense.
Works for a lot of people.
Well, I get to be noted in the minutes that Phil gives a history lesson on Roman numerals.
That was all I found in minutes as well. Oh, I did have a question, but it might not be minutes review. On page five, it says staff, at the very bottom, it says staff is seeking legal clarification on how to handle permitting during the interim period. I don't know if we can touch on that at some point.
Emphasis goes on the first syllable in that word for permitting.
I will move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
So we have motion on the floor to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Alright, public comments. Anybody online?
You have one individual online, but not unmuted.
No comments. Communications received by the board.
I'll just give a very brief follow-up about the item I mentioned in communications at the prior meeting as well, which is the easement, the mid-state downtown property easement across that upper parking lot, which is something the planning board asked for as a condition of that site plan approval. That, the select board has added that to their agenda for this coming Monday and will be holding hearing number one out of two on that item. So that will be the first, basically, of two requisite public hearings before a vote can be made on whether to accept an easement, because in order to accept any type of transfer like that, there's that process under our, say, forty-one fourteen that the select board needs to go through. And, you know, the Conservation Commission did review this as well. Under the statute, they are also required to weigh in and they did provide a favorable recommendation. So broadly speaking, if anyone on the planning board is interested in watching that hearing or attending, certainly it's a public hearing, everybody's encouraged to attend. I've just given them some general background. We did, after quite some time, a legal review and then subsequent revisions to the language of the actual easement deed and then the easement plan that is signed off on by the town's attorney. So, subject to the select board reviewing it, holding a hearing and making a decision, that condition is now, at this point, finally being resolved, which is nice to close out that, hopefully close out that action item, ultimately up to the select board what they do with it, but certainly the planning board and the Conservation Commission were both asked for that to happen.
And when is that, that, what was the date of that?
The eleventh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, reports of committees. Anybody got anything to report on?
You? You're probably the only one who actually might have something right now.
And I reported last time that it wouldn't be until October, John.
Oh.
It's August.
No news is good news.
Right.
Repeats, that won't be happening till October.
Okay, new business, housing master plan chapter project. Judy Barrett is with us again.
I am, I'm so happy to be here.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna turn it right over to you. So I have a fun project for everybody for the next, what did we figure, a month or so?
Okay.
Let me introduce you to the six-word story. You ever heard of a six-word story? You should do this for an engagement activity. So I think we have three locations, if I'm not mistaken. The library, we have three of these for you. The library, the senior center and town hall. And the way this works is, well, we'll put a box out in front of this lovely poster and a stash of cards and pens, and people are asked to write in six words their response to some topic. And in this case, it happens to be the concept of home. So, people will have an opportunity to think about this, dwell on it, probably get stumped, and then write in six words what they think about home, what it means to them, their response to their current home, the kind of home they wish they had, the kind of home they hope for in the future, whatever they want to say. But it's to get people thinking about housing without the tension or, you know, fanfare of a public meeting or something like that, and it's not an online survey which people are sick of. So we were planning to do this, it's a, we have done this many times for different projects, and it's really a lovely activity. We get a lot of interesting thoughts. We figured we would put this out probably the week of the eighteenth of August and let it run for a month, so you'll get through Labor Day, because you might get a somewhat different mix of people. If you want this in more than three locations, I can have more of these made. I just picked these up at Staples and Tilton on my way here. Joseph, it was amazing, they weren't gonna be ready and then all of a sudden they were.
Nice.
Yeah, so we can have more of these made. The one thing I don't have with me, which I'm frustrated about, is the boxes. So I have all the other, I know, it's embarrassing. The boxes that we use for this are like ballot boxes, so they're about ten by ten and there's a flap up at the top, so what you can do, because I do have these, is this goes on the top, it says six-word stories, and then we put, you know, some bigger story here. So between the front of the box and the back flap, there's like two ways of people seeing this thing. It just works really well, and then there's a slot and they just put the card in. And I think, because the boxes will be a ten by ten, no one's gonna have to babysit this. My only concern is, I can't imagine you will go through five hundred cards here, but I have five hundred cards and I have a box of pens. I have these, I have stickers for the boxes and I have the posters. I do not have the boxes. Incredibly, when I was going through the tunnel in Boston, my daughter Meredith sent me a message and said, "They're here." But I wasn't turning back to go to hang them at that point, so what we'll do is we'll just ship them up to you, and I apologize.
Can you revise, remind me of the locations? Town Hall, library and?
And senior center. Yeah. It's just that, it's a nice lightweight way to get people thinking about housing that's frankly, not very political, although some of the comments, you know, will be political, but it just doesn't have the heat of a public meeting, it's not about publicity, it's just about what people think about home. And I find, in talking about housing, if you can get people to think more about home than just housing, housing gets this like it's a building, but home is a place that are the heart and it's where you live and you feel safe, you hope. So, that's what we want to bring out in people and maybe be able to set a, I don't want to say a more constructive tone, because God knows you got a lot done at town meeting last year, but, but, you know, just kind of a, I don't know, a softer way to think about housing needs in the community. So, this is sort of our launch of engagement for this, because we don't have a big budget for engagement, but I thought this would be a cool activity and you're gonna get some interesting insights out of it.
Can I ask how, so after a month, this runs, and we have a bunch of really interesting feedback, do, how do we share this back with the community? Because I can imagine this would be a great way to build momentum going forward as well, which I'm sure you thought about, and I'm kinda curious what, how that looks next.
So, it depends on what you want me to do. One project we did recently, they wanted us to put together a transcript of all the statements, and they put it on their website, but it was sort of a not very glamorous way to honor what was done. On a couple of other projects, we used a range of the responses as like sidebars in a report, so you might be reading a section of a report on housing needs and there's some text boxes that have comments from the six-word stories. And usually, I have to tell you, usually the comments that you get on this, because people have to write it down, are a little bit less flip and a little bit less like angry than the kind of open-ended comments you get on a survey. So, they're more useful comments, and some of them might be for painful, but they're not, usually not angry. So we've used them that way to honor the fact that people did participate. Part of the challenge with this project is, we just don't have a big budget for it, so I know at some point we need to talk about having some type of community meeting, and I'm not quite sure what the best time is for that, but it seems to me as though this kind of content might be very helpful in a community meeting to get people thinking more about, you know, well, what's your home experience? These are things we've heard from people in the community, and that's one possible way to do it. But what I didn't want to do was get this whole project done and have people have no idea that it's being done. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I'm totally open to suggestions. I, I'm more than happy to do a community meeting here, I just can't do three. And I don't know that you need three for this anyway.
You've already done this?
Six-word stories?
Yeah.
I've done them in other communities, yeah.
Do you break, break them, break the comments down into groups, like maybe six different groups or?
We've done that.
Yeah.
You know, themes.
General theme, you know?
Yeah, we've done that, looking for themes, drawing out, you know, one, well, the town of Brookline, which is huge, we got a couple of hundred responses. And Brookline has branch libraries, because it's just, you know, heavily populated town, and is still a town, by the way. But, we were, we used it, thematically, we used it to reinforce some needs assessment data that had come out of the work for that project, different ways to use it, but we can certainly do the theme, it's fine.
And if any of us have time, which I'm not sure we do, would it be useful to do this in places where we'd have to like babysit a little bit more, like downtown at eight o'clock in the morning or?
I was wondering about that.
At?
Fine with it, how?
Yeah.
And if you need, so what we had talked about, the one thing I didn't bring with me today because I didn't have time to get it done, was just a flyer to have to say, "It's in three places." You know, the flyer would say, "We're doing this project, Plymouth Planning Board, available till September fifteenth," I think we had said, "and you can tell your story at Town Hall, the library or the senior center." So we'll have those flyers, and I can give them to you both as something you can print, but also as a JPG that you can put on social media. And if you want to then take one of these boxes, I can give you a fourth if it would be easy to have a roving one, you know, and then you don't have to move any of these.
It wouldn't be, like, Town Hall's not open on the weekend.
Yes.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we could have town staff just move it over and like put it on the bandstand, or on the, on the?
Common.
On the common.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would think that would be.
Leave it, leave it for the weekend even, you know, because there are a lot of people that walk around and stop for ice cream, like, if we, if we put like a little sign on the stairs that say, "Survey up here" or something like that, like, you know, there's, it's not gonna get any business at Town Hall over the weekend anyway.
What about someplace like Oversean Howard or something like that? I wonder if they would do something. Oh, can you do that or not? Let me ask you why not, right?
To ask permission, but?
Yeah.
Where's that?
Just right on Main Street, but a lot of people go in it.
Like Rans?
I mean, Rans, wow, I thought it was Oversean.
It is, yeah.
They were recently sold, but, yeah.
Well, now it's Ace, now it's Ace. Now it's Ace Hardware.
Oh, it's Ace? Oh, okay, I got.
Oversean, Ace, Rans, it's all, all of the above.
The hardware store.
Anyway, someplace like that, I would, I don't know.
I'm also wondering if like, the, all three seem to be concentrated like in the downtown area, and I know, thinking like, Teddy Mountain Highway. Yeah.
But, so, I have a question, so?
I can make as many boards as you want.
I don't wanna babysit them though.
I have a slightly, I wouldn't mind like babysitting it like for a couple of hours in a really high-traffic, high-profile place, maybe if we share that, like not too extensively, so we're like working full-time doing this.
Yeah.
But I would, I was, and maybe the board say this, I'm remembering Hop One, and there was some discussion about like the relevance of people who come to the community versus people who live in the community. And they both have something to say that is different in some ways. And, like, if you start on the Teddy Mountain Highway area, you're gonna pull from a really broad group of people who come from all over the place to go shopping.
Yeah.
Whereas Main Street pulls a little bit more locally, but still broadly. I'd say, anyway, I'm just kinda wondering how we feel and if that's in the verbiage already about like residents, non-residents, transient, like visitors.
It's not, it, this, this activity isn't designed to sort?
Doesn't matter.
I was gonna say, does it really matter?
I wouldn't think so.
I, I, I just, I didn't think so, it's one of the, I was just kinda curious.
I would think that like, if we could get one to Walmart for a day or two on a weekend, like Market Basket, Hannaford, like if we could get like one box to each of the stores for a weekend, it might be a good way to?
Or for during the, for a month, it could be one place, another place.
So the only thing I would say is, if you're gonna move them, which is fine, you might wanna empty the box before you take it, in case, you know, I'm just thinking, if you're not gonna be, if there's not gonna be a way to supervise it, you don't know what might happen to the contents of the box, if somebody doesn't like the activity or if somebody's got an issue around housing. So, just take the cards out so that you're putting an empty box there.
I'm sure why they couldn't, someone could go around and do that, you know?
I mean, there would also be some interesting data about that, if we segmented where the, where they were, you know, what responses were collected where, like, this, this bunch came from Town Hall, this bunch came from the common, this bunch came from Walmart, this bunch came from Market Basket.
You know, it's so funny you should bring this up, because I almost got different colored index cards.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I thought, I'm just getting too nuts about this, so.
Yeah.
It's like?
All of that requires analysis afterwards too, and maybe, maybe we don't need to do that.
I think an interesting place for it to be at some point would be the hospital, given the number of visiting nurses and housing situations for all the nurses, long-term and visiting, and, so I'm not even thinking about the patients, which is a whole nother group of people, but the staff.
Yeah.
There are real housing issues for hospital staff.
In the main lobby of the hospital, kind of thing.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, yeah.
So, do you want me to get a few more of these made, so you have them?
It seems like that's what we're thinking.
I mean, this was not that expensive, so I can get a couple more, the only problem for you is you'd have to go pick them up, because I love coming here, but I'm not gonna be up here in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
In Tilton, like, I'm down there all the time too, so, yeah.
I just had them done at Staples, they did a great job. So, this makes me think, maybe I should send like five boxes or something, if that is three, and I'll just also send you more of these.
And one thing that we had kind of briefly touched on is community events, so?
Yeah, right.
If there's the townwide yard sale is coming up, I don't know if there are other ones folks are aware of, but if one or two people wanted to just actually bring the full display and, and set it up there, or were willing to volunteer some time to help make that happen at, at an event that we know of, that community members go to, that could be another, another avenue. I don't have the full community calendar, you know, right off the top of my head, but the yard sale kind of jumped out at me as a possibility.
Do you know, and did you figure out when that is, by the way, or has that already happened?
Is it Labor Day weekend?
No, it's, it's, it's early September.
Yeah, it is, early September, forgotten the?
Weekend after Labor Day?
It might be, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I always forget. I know it's, there's a system to it, but it's not my system.
I just couldn't find it online, so I thought maybe it had already happened.
The first or second Saturday of the month or something, or after Labor Day, or?
So, at the yard sale, can you do something more, like, do you get a booth, or how does that table, or how does that work?
It's dispersed, it's like, it literally is people's yards, but like, you know, it brings people to town, so like, setting it up on like, you know, setting up a table on the common for that weekend might be a good way to catch passersby.
I will say, very few people go through the common, because?
Right, it's busy.
There's nothing being sold there, but if you're next to the place where they're giving out the maps, maybe, I know it didn't work at the airport, I assume knows very well.
That's hard, because people are on a, they're on a dead run to hit these yard sales. And to get them to stop and do something is, I learned my lesson. I didn't get one, nobody was like, "I don't have time for that." It's interesting to hear you say this, because we're doing an activity right now with Nantucket, which has gotta be one of the hardest places in the world to work, and just trying to?
An hour-long ferry each way.
Just trying to identify a location to do a similar type of activity, we were thinking, well, we'll go to the In Island Stop and Shop, because that's usually locals, but people just, they wanna get their groceries and get out, so?
They don't wanna talk to people.
They don't wanna talk to people, so we're actually gonna use the In Island Post Office. In Island is just, you're not by the waterfront, so you're more likely to be local.
Nobody has mentioned they're our most happening social place in the town, Saturday at the dump.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, my next thing.
Sunday at the dump.
And people are always willing to talk, they like love to chat while they're there.
Do they? You have a different experience.
It can be a social place.
So, I'll just get some extras made, you guys can decide, I think what I'd like to suggest is, if we can sort of think of this as like an, you know, eighteenth of August to fifteenth of September or something, just give it a month, give it those before and after Labor Day. If there's something going on, like on a Saturday, where it might be good to have an extra set of hands or something, just let me know, because I don't mind scooting up here. I really don't. It's nice to come here. You don't know how nice it is to come up here, just don't know.
Are you looking for housing?
I just wish I could get my husband to leave, but it's never gonna happen.
Despite the fact that we all think it's tremendously expensive, it's really quite affordable.
It's, it's so interesting to talk to people in New Hampshire about taxes. I was in a meeting last week where people were just passionate about, about their frustration with property taxes. And, and I think there's this view that somehow, in Massachusetts, we are like taxed to death, but hearing some of what people talk about here as tax bills, I'm thinking, well, we are taxed to death in Massachusetts, but you guys are taxed to death too, and I think it's just a question of what tax stream is the money coming out of. It was interesting.
How are you paying it?
Yeah.
Are you paying it twice a year in lump sums?
Yeah, right.
Or are you paying it every time you buy a gallon of milk?
Or, or out of your paycheck, you know? It's, it's true, it's very interesting.
Is the value of your real estate really the best measure of ability to pay?
That's another whole story.
Well, this, this might be a long conversation.
Can't fix that.
No, it's just a good question, I mean, you know?
So, the answer's not always.
Right, no, I know.
So, I can help to support this as much as I can, you just need to let me know. I will, meantime, just get a couple more made and we'll ship the boxes up and blah, blah. I'm supposed to be, there's this rumor that I'm going away next week.
Oh.
I, I'm not sure that it's really true, but?
Oh, interesting, good.
You have a reservation somewhere, whether you get, you get there or not?
So, here's my dream about vacation, you're gonna all laugh at me, because I have a feeling you'll be surprised. About six years ago, my husband convinced me to go on a cruise, and my whole life I thought, "A cruise, God, I don't wanna do that, that's not me." I got on the ship, I went to a room with a balcony, and I looked out at the water and said, "Jesus loves me." So, my idea of the perfect vacation now is, get me to my room, I want the balcony, and no one's gonna bother me for a week. So that is the plan, that we're actually leaving Saturday morning, but, but I'm easy to get hold of, I take work with me and it's fine.
Where you gonna go?
Just up to the coast of Bay, oh, well, this is the other joke, alright, you have to listen to my stories tonight, I haven't seen you guys for a while. So, I have a son who lives in Halifax, Nova Scotia, he works for Dalhousie University, they have two kids. So, this ship, the whole reason for this trip, the raison d'etre for this trip, was it's gonna stop in Halifax. Their kid was put on the provincial boys soccer team. Guess where they are?
Los Angeles.
They're in Montreal.
Montreal.
And they will not be in Halifax next week.
That's pretty far, from Halifax to Montreal.
So these provincial games are, you know, the national games are on for next week, so, yeah, so I won't get to see my son.
You can see Halifax.
I get to see Halifax.
I was gonna say that this, this?
Site of, site of the largest domestic explosion in, in history.
Well, my son lives in the neighborhood that blew up. It's, it's a national?
Yeah.
Landmark now, the Hydrastone.
It blew up there? Yeah, it was like a munitions boat.
Yeah.
It, it was early, like late eighteen hundreds, it was, it was like?
No, it was nineteen fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but, it was, it was like a hundred years ago, but it was a really big, like?
I haven't heard about that.
Conventional explosion, conventional munitions.
So from his neighborhood, you can see the Narrows, which is, it's just this point where the harbor really narrows and these two ships came out at each other and hit, and it was like a, it was like a nuclear explosion.
Wow.
So the whole hillside blew up.
That's why we get a Christmas tree from him.
That is exactly what it is.
The Christmas tree down the, down the White House.
Boston, that's correct, thanks, somewhere, every year.
Every year they give it to us, because, because the United States helped.
Oh, really?
Oh, and the, yes, we have been to the Scottish Games in Anagosh, so, anyway. You don't need to hear my stories, but?
That's nice.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking forward to it.
We hope you're looking forward to vacation.
I'm thinking about the dump.
It's a great place.
Trying to just circle us back really hard. I think that the dump might be a good spot to have it permanently there.
Is there a good covered location we could just leave it at for the whole duration?
Yeah, like right at the corner where the office store is.
I, I don't mind helping going around as far as setting one up, believe me, and then going back and checking it and then seeing if it's full and see, you know?
Well, I like?
Anyone has it man, maned or anything, but just?
I think that the?
Pick it at the end of the day, get it maybe?
As long as we're not burdening the staff, like, they tend to be overwhelmed with managing other things.
No, I think that if we're gonna have permanent locations be kind of like civic institutional places in Plymouth, then I think the dump makes sense to be another permanent location.
Yeah.
Town Hall, library, senior center, dump. And then I like the idea of a roving one, if we're willing, if the board is willing to babysit, take turns in certain places.
Maybe just a couple hours somewhere.
Yeah.
You know?
We could have it like a checkout system where if members had an idea, a place you wanted to bring it, as long as you had permission to set it up there, you could just?
Yeah.
Put a little signup sheet in Town Hall and you say, you know, "I'm taking it to?"
I like that.
Next place for X number of days or hours, I mean, that could be a way to?
So one run roving?
A roving station.
One checkout roving one, I think that'd be nice.
I like the idea of putting in a varied loc, you know, not everybody who lives in town goes downtown, and, you know, if all three are there, like, we might miss people.
Yeah.
And I think it's good to have a variety of locations where we might get people with different perspectives.
I agree.
So, this is probably, you know, the suburb slash city side of me, anxiety coming up. But the only concern I had about having it in a place like the dump was just supervising it.
Yeah.
Because people are putting their, their response in a box and you just want to make sure that it doesn't get trashed or something. But, yeah, I mean, you guys know your dump.
By like the accidentally by a staff person or something, or?
Oh, some angry, somebody who's angry.
Oh, just throwing it there.
You know, at least if it's a town hall or it's a library.
Put a camera, a security camera on it.
There's staff there to kind of make sure that.
There are staff there, yeah.
Okay, you know the situation better than I do. I'm not going to try to micromanage it.
It's kind of actually a pretty friendly place.
Yeah, it's, I would say.
That's the best place to.
That's why I like to come here.
Well, that's, and that's the place they say if you want to run for office, that's where you need to hang out.
Yeah, same is true at my dump.
I've met, I've met friends at the dump. Like, I met people at the dump who have like become friends, you know.
And it's actually the recycling center.
It's true. It is the recycling.
But it's the dump.
It is, but they don't really care.
Officially.
With all due respect.
It does do a lot of recycling, so that is a huge amount of work there.
At least we sort it. Some of it gets recycled.
That's a difference as well.
That's, that's great. I think that's a great idea. I think it's going to be very interesting. And I think, I think it will be too. And it's, again, I think getting people to sort of think about housing in some other way than, you know, the way that it often just ends up being a difficult conversation.
The blocks that you leave at the recycling facility will also be just residence.
Yes, that's.
Well, that's good.
Nobody can dump there unless they have a sticker.
That's what I was thinking about as being, the, the recycling center is especially good.
I've, I've, I've been going there for ten years. I've never had a sticker.
Some people are very vigilant about having a sticker.
And I know people from, like, Camden who go there.
We, we make revenue on a lot of our recycling, so it's not the end of the world if we get out of towners.
Really? How much we make on glass?
I know. We paid a lot to get rid of it. I know. I know. It's a sore spot on for me too. I agree.
Well, let's grind it, make it rough and put it on top of the road.
We, we do pay to get rid of metal and.
Why, I didn't know that. Terrible.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. The, the market has really changed, sorry.
I'm not listening. I'm just looking at Judy.
I'm just trying to open my file here, so.
It's actually, it, it actually, it's, it's great for culverts and stuff like that, and even for roads. But apparently we ground it too rough or something at some point and put it on top of a road and it like caused problems.
Makes good fill. You can fill in, you can backfill if you're doing a culvert project. You can actually, if it's appropriately processed, you can use it as fill. You can use it for some part. Some towns are working on utilizing it more, but.
Rushed glass?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
I've heard of incidents.
Basically sand. Turning it back into sand.
Yeah, I understand. That makes sense.
So, kind of going this route was, was a bit of an impromptu decision.
I think it's great.
Well, thank you. A question I have though is, we were originally thought about doing a more traditional community survey in September. And I'm wondering, do you think we need to do that? Or can we write off of this engagement as a way to move into what we had planned as a community meeting in October? Do you want to do a survey as well?
Can you describe the survey briefly?
Yeah, I mean, it would be an online survey.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
You know, we got a lot of participation in the last one. I'm not sure we need it, but I wa- I don't want to, I don't want to shortchange you either. If you think there's value in doing a more traditional survey, we can certainly do that as well. It might be worth, I'm sorry, you were going to ask.
The town, the town manager has a, a weekly newsletter that goes out that a lot of people read. It might be a good place to put a link to a survey.
Okay.
Although it does require extra, like, capacity to actually crunch all the numbers from the survey and make meaning out of them, which I know is a little bit limited with their budget maybe. I, I was going to say though, is there anything, since we did one like two years ago, is there anything we'd ask in a master plan survey that we did not ask in the previous survey, which was not for a master plan? Or would it be almost the same thing anyway and maybe not worth re-asking?
We, we've had a lot of changes since then. I mean, we, we've changed zoning since then. And then, then there had also been, like, the last meeting, we went through all the state.
Yes, the new stuff.
RSAs that have changed, that are mandating changes to housing policy.
I'm not sure how many people are going to be responding, responding to that, for example, in a survey.
But, I mean, the, the context of our questions may differ.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, so, you know, this is, this is for master plan. So, it's going to have more of a land use focus than, say, a housing needs assessment. What we did in Hop One, this isn't just a repeat of it, it's like, how do you fit housing into the sort of physical plan for your community? And you've made some decisions, you've made some zoning changes, you've got some you have to make because of the state. And I guess I'm just wondering, is it worth it to put it out there to find out what people's appetite is or concerns about additional zoning that's still on the table? And, you know, this isn't just a zoning project, but it kind of does relate to land use. So, like, can't have a land use plan without zoning. So, this was another thing I wanted to just get a temperature from the board about tonight is, what's your thinking about Fairgrounds Road, which was in the last master plan? What's your thinking about Tenny Mountain? Where are we on those? Because I haven't talked to you in a couple of months. I'm just wondering where your thoughts are on all that.
As we talk, I'm thinking, a nice streamlined survey, much shorter than the last one, to really get right to those questions, already having the data from the last one, might be helpful. Since we are talking about visions for the future more so in this one, but really streamlining it and making it.
And the question is, is a survey the best way to get at that?
I'm, I'm wondering if the survey might focus. I, I think one of the things, you know, your, your discussion about land use in, in, in the housing chapter brings me back to the ever prevalent question of people's attitudes about the more lenient zone of town and what we should allow there in terms of, you know, should there be restrictions on what you can do on your personal home property versus citing businesses? So, I mean, it's currently the ag zone. Is that even the right, like, is that the best name, like?
You, you've discovered a new euphemism, the more lenient zone inside.
I, you, you know, it, it appears to me that the university is, their enrollment is shrinking.
Yeah, what?
Shrinking.
Yeah.
They're, they're planning on.
Dramatically, you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, we went through a period of time where we had an enormous amount of off-campus housing constructed. And, and, and people who are converting residential homes to student housing.
Right.
And it's going the other way. And I think one of, one, one friend that I have who owns student housing says that eighty percent of his properties are not students now.
So.
So, I, I, I see a sh- a, a complete shift in how these properties are being utilized. And, and that's got to play into the demand for, for housing and, and how we're going to approach it.
Well, I agree. I mean, we had kind of talked about this a bit early in the previous, the Hop One, that you could foresee a situation where the student demand was going to drop and what happens to these properties that had been converted precisely for student housing. What's it now going to cost if you, if somebody wants to kind of undo the student renovations and have something that's more like the single-family home perhaps than it originally was? You know, what kind of cost implications for that? And, and what kinds of apartments are these when you're dividing up an existing structure for students? You're not necessarily designing the kind of apartment you might if you were doing, you know, apartments for just anybody. So, it is interesting to me to hear that they are renting out those units. I wonder who's here. Do you know who's renting the units? Do you know who's moving into town, who's renting those homes?
I, I think it's workforce housing generally.
I do not know.
I, I can speak anecdotally and say I've seen some young families and such in these housing, but like, that's not at all statistically like viable. I've, I've seen this. There might be other people in there I haven't seen.
I, I understand that the university is converting Bellknap Residential Hall to, to apartments.
Do we know that, or is that a?
Well, I.
It's, it's more than, it's more than, it's more than rumored. It's kind of right from the president's mouth.
Well, he said it, but is there any actual movement other than?
They're, they're working on a plan.
Okay.
And supposedly it's going to be for staff, which means they don't have to deal with the zoning issues.
Just going to say.
Otherwise, it's a, they're going to, they're going to need a variance otherwise.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the original question was, do we need this community survey?
Yes.
And.
You're trying to bring us back to what we were talking.
Well, I do. Sometimes I don't. So, we either do the survey or we only have a community meeting. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, because we're going to do the community meeting anyway in this October. And I guess I'm thinking about, I'm, I'm thinking ahead to that. And I'm just wondering what will be helpful to the board in preparation for that. Because part of what we need to talk about in that meeting is, is how does housing relate to the physical plan for this community? I mean, that, it's in, it's for a master plan, you have to get into that.
So, do you have thoughts about what the community meeting is going to look like and how it's going to be organized? Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering like how these two would fit with one another?
Well, sometimes a survey is helpful. If you've done a survey, you can introduce in the meeting, we heard these things from the community. And we want to talk about these things tonight so that we can understand better what might have informed some of these responses. And perhaps, you know, where the, where the concerns are and how might the master plan address them? So, that's a way that.
And that's a way of wedding the appetite for getting people to come and talk more after they said a little bit in the survey.
Or they, or they can't go to the meeting.
I like, I like the information that surveys give us. Is there another way to get that information other than doing a survey?
Did you, and I, I'm, perhaps I'm misremembering this. There was a, I think at some point we had talked about, is there some other survey-like platform? Like the map-based kind of sticky note platform, I think you had mentioned, that's kind of like a survey.
Story map.
Not plain.
Story map.
I don't know if that would be a useful tool here.
So, usually for a project like this, we would probably do a story map a little bit later in the project. So, we could, story map is, is great. You're doing it in GIS and they're fun. You might be showing on it things that people, representations of things that you heard from people, representations of perhaps what the land use implications of different housing policies might be. I feel like it's a little bit early to do that.
I feel like people are getting sick of surveys because.
I know.
You pick up the phone even and it's a damn survey.
I know.
I mean, it's just. They're everywhere, but if we can, but the, but it does provide really valuable information.
Right.
And it does give good discussion items. But is there, is there just another way that you can spice it up a little bit to get people to respond? I, I don't really.
Well, I liked what Phil said, I think it was Phil, said about it being maybe smaller, a smaller survey. I think I, I'm usually, I'm sick of surveys too, but I'm more apt to do a survey if I know it's going to be like five questions.
Five questions, yes.
So, we can, we can keep it short. I mean, we can set, we can turn the setting on that says to the user, you know, the survey should take you approximately four minutes or something, and they can see the bar, you know, as they're progressing through it, so they know they're getting to the end. Sometimes people don't know how close they are to the end. Until they've burned through, you know, twenty pages and they've just had it, so.
Yes, that's, yeah.
And I just stop.
Me too.
Click.
So.
Judy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
As a scientist. We're at, with these surveys that we're having, I feel, I feel, are, are very biased. Let me, let me explain why. Because we're going down the path when you're asking a survey in the forms of, of housing. But if we take a step back as a board and a community, what is the culture of the town? When you do a survey, what is the culture? What is the economic growth of the future? Is it going to be a technology? Those questions aren't integrated into the survey. It's very specific for housing. And I feel it's important that we have a little bit more broader questions in there as well. We're just talking about student housing. And what about businesses, workforce housing and so on? It's related to that economic growth of the area or economic development of the, of the community in the future. So, I, I from, from one, these questions we have are great and are very targeted towards housing. But is it, is it, are they, is it really giving us fair data back to the group as a whole without biases?
So, that's a good question. Well, first of all, all these su- surveys are biased, so let me just disabuse you of that right away. The, the challenge I have is we're not doing the master plan. We're doing a section. Which you don't have right now.
Master plan.
So, my job is kind of a funny one here. And now I'm thinking about housing and how it relates to the existing plan, knowing that in the next couple of years, you're probably going to update the plan anyway. And is there information, we can get into this, that might be helpful to you toward that? Not that I'm trying to steer the outcome of a plan that isn't written yet, but, but I need to be thinking about this. I don't see surveys like this as scientific. That's not what they're about. They're really about engagement. There, it's about an opportunity for people to participate who, who may not ever want to get up at a public meeting.
Yeah.
But they have, they have thoughts, they have things they want to say.
Yeah.
And they don't want to get up and ha- and be shot down. So, to me, it's more of an engagement opportunity. And we, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I, I think that's maybe the big, one of the bigger strengths of the survey too is that I, you know, people are very scared to say things in front of large groups of people.
Gosh, they sure are.
And that's understandable, but I, it'd be great to still be able to hear from people who are in that position.
And also, also say, in, in a, if you do, you know, the community meeting, there could be a hypothetical, if there was a large growth in the workforce, where would you imagine, or how would you imagine
Yeah, yeah, we can build those things.
Contending with, with a growing workforce in the town of Plymouth.
Yeah.
And, so, I mean, there, there are questions you can ask, I think, vaguely, that can like, say like, how would you imagine like housing a larger workforce?
Yeah.
Well, and I think even in the survey, you could get people to think about, well, what kinds of jobs are missing in your community? And, you know, what would you like to see here in terms of employment opportunities that don't currently exist or exist in short supply? Or, you know, what happens when you have, you know, these gifted PhDs in your community who suddenly can't, don't have a class to teach because, you know, I mean, we could do some of that. I also just want to be conscious of trying to keep the survey from turning into a full-blown master plan survey. But I have, I understand what you're saying, and I think we could probably do a few questions that might tease some of that out.
That response was excellent. I'm sorry. That was great clarification.
Yeah, we could do that.
We, we don't really have a business park or an industrial park.
Yeah.
That would change the nature of our, of, of, of the population of the town.
That would.
Sure would.
That's related to the TMOD question.
It is.
The Tenny Mountain Overlay District question.
Yeah.
Which we've talked quite thoroughly about in the last couple of months, I think.
The only, the only town I can think of that has done that, the only, the, the most analogous town I can think of that's done that is Littleton. And my understanding is that the Littleton kind of commercial park has really not been the success that they wanted it to be. It tends to be a lot of warehouse space without a lot of employment. You know, it tends to be, you know, cheap real estate and big warehouses, but not really a lot of jobs. You know, my, my understanding that the takeaway from that was that it didn't really achieve the goals of turning it into manufacturing or, or, you know, service industry.
Was that their plan? Excuse me, was that?
Yeah, man, I think, I think the goal was job, job, you know, creating a, cre- using public funds somewhat to help lay out the infrastructure and, and create the zoning that would allow businesses to cite there. But yet, yet, you know, the types of businesses that are cited there are, are, are not the type, types that bring the type of investment.
But I've been up to Hanstorf in there and I've noticed that when I was up there, like, it's just a lot of small sort of businesses, but a lot of just storage and places that, I was like.
There's more of that Concord in the south. But we are Concord north.
That's right.
Over in Lebanon, you know, they, they kind of integrated Dartmouth with the industrial park and the business park. And, and the place is just screaming.
Like where the co-op is?
I'm thinking, I, I know what you mean, the, the Aetna Road, the, the area. Like, if you go up one-twenty towards the hospital, there's like an, a commercial park.
Yeah.
Well, the hospital is also like a, a major city unto itself.
That's true, it is.
Yeah, right, it is. But, you know, there, there's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of medical tech startups that have come out of the, the research hospital. You know, there, there are some, you know, Fuji Dymatics, there's, you know, Hypertherm started there. I think Hypertherm has six facilities in that vicinity now.
Bunch of which are losing federal grants.
What's that?
And that's the thing, Dartmouth, they, they have something that's pulling these businesses in. They've got the hospital.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the nucleus of what really allowed that growth. We don't have that. What do we have?
Dart, Dartmouth has a hospital and a college. Plymouth has a hospital and a college. It's a different scale.
It is.
But the scale of Dartmouth.
That scale or the.
We, we, this community does benefit from the, from those assets in the same way that Dartmouth does, Hanover does, but to a lesser extent.
But you see, like, the, the employment numbers at that hospital, like, it's a city.
It is.
It, it's kind of crazy.
They need.
People want Plymouth work there.
Yeah.
It's just a different, much larger scale.
Oh, sure.
The area is just crawling into other towns around it. We just don't have that big draw.
But you've got Tenny Mountain.
You have a Tenny Mountain.
Sorry for bringing that up again.
Thanks for reminding us.
Sorry. We do have it. We're very fortunate.
We've seen, we've seen growth in the past ten years. Like, you know, there, there are numerous new restaurants that are doing well. They're, they're, you know, it, it's not, this, we're not on the down slope. We're, it's, 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 we're seeing steady growth, which is good.
We're just, our, our surroundings, I mean, we, we are surrounded by the river, which is, got a railroad bed next to, I mean, there's just a lot of things that are so different. It's just not a great comparison, I guess.
No, we have an airport too. You have assets here.
And Lebanon has an airport.
With, with, with new water supply.
You need an airport.
We have that.
Anyhow.
I think we should do the survey. I think it'd be good.
I like, I like the idea of a survey.
I, I'm happy to do it. It's not a problem. I think the only thing I might suggest is that I was originally thinking we would do the community meeting in October, and I'm inclined to say, let's do it in, at the beginning of November. The rationale is this, we're gonna do the six-word story till September fifteenth. We're gonna launch the survey. So, even if you only leave it out for a few weeks, which frankly, I would suggest no more than three,
Yeah.
I still need some time to distill the data and design the meeting. And so, if it's not a big inconvenience for you, I don't know, I know you're gonna start bumping into public hearing dates and so forth, but if it would not be a problem to just assume we're doing that community meeting the first Thursday in Dec- in November instead of October, I think it would be great. All right, just, how does that strike you? Does that create complications for you?
Share?
Share being in August, no?
No, I mean, I, I.
I don't think so.
I, I don't think so. I, um, Josephine?
People are out and about.
Um, we do have some potentially large zoning amendments, which are gonna be a hot topic, maybe or maybe not of discussion. You never really know ahead of time, um, coming into work sessions in the late fall, early winter. Um, and usually our public hearings are in December and January at our work sessions, and. And, and so I, I think November could work. I, I, I just, I, it, it is gonna be busy. I just, like, wanna remind everyone on the board that, like, it's gonna be a few busy months to, like, do both of those simultaneously.
So we could do the community meeting on a different night?
We could, yeah.
Um, so we can talk about the date. I mean, I'm just saying, if you need that first Thursday in November, because you're anticipating needing the time for work sessions, we could just look at a different night. Um.
I think we've made a lot of progress already.
Pardon me?
I, I think we have made a lot of progress already on the more complicated things.
Are you gonna need help with any of this zoning? That was my, that was my, my, my next question.
Are you offering?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm here working on this plan that's like land use, like, do you need some help? I mean, I don't know, Josephine, you're gonna, if you're gonna be all under control, I don't wanna take anything away from anybody, but if you need help.
On the, uh.
I would say, you know, we've, we've made some changes. I'm not sure of that we've totally agreed upon them yet to the, um, PUD.
Okay.
And it might be good to get some eyes on those.
I would never say no to having a professional's eyes.
Um, on the other hand, we're also talking about the Fairgrounds one,
Yeah, I know.
which hasn't really changed, except we're gonna have to change just stuff from changing state laws.
Right.
And, and then there's a lot of things we have to do just because of changing state laws, and then.
Yeah. Those are the most concrete.
And then there's the.
At the moment.
I forgot what you called the ag zone before, but there, there's a, um, and that, and that might, I'm not even sure we know where we're going with that at this point, so, yeah.
Something, you know, I gotta say this about the whole ag zone issue. I'm working on a housing element. That's my focus. You've got big land use conversations you're gonna have to do here about the overall zoning plan for your town, that I'm not sure this is the element to take on. Um, so I, and it's not that I'm afraid of controversy, 'cause surely by now you know I'm not, but I just think, let's just try to focus on what, what the purpose of this is, which is to think about housing, housing growth and change, and how it relates to the broader physical evolution of this community, which I know you're gonna say, but the ag zone's inextricably tied to that, but that's for the master plan to sort out. It's not this element, really. I, I just.
That's, it's, it's, it's good to delineate that.
Yeah, I think so.
We can, that allows us to focus on housing, which is less controversial.
I do remember from the last round. I do remember from the last round of work on this, I remember we sent the survey out, and we asked a question about multifamily housing.
Yep.
And then we did the visual preferences survey, and it was a smaller pool of people, but a seemingly different bunch of responses based upon what this could actually look like versus what we imagined in our heads.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm wondering, we don't have the answers tonight, but I'm just wondering how to kind of tackle that issue this, this round, because there did seem to be a little bit more flexibility if we can imagine what this might look like versus what we're, like, preconceiving multifamily housing to be.
So, it is not hard to replicate in zoning dimensional rules what you would need to have the outcomes that people were more comfortable with. Um, it's a question of how you define height, how you define setback, how you define what's allowable within the setback. I mean, there are, there are definitely things you can do that your zoning doesn't have right now, um, all of which are allowable. If people want to go that route. I mean, you can write multifamily regulations, you can write attached single-family regulations so that you don't end up with a big box. You can do that. You can, you can define height by the height of the first floor versus the upper stories, and that automatically changes the feel of the building. There's a lot of things like that you could do if you wanted to do it. And, um, you know, for me, it's just a question of getting direction from you about what you want. But I, I would just say, as a general rule, I think, I don't care what town it is, the emphasis on putting more development where you have the infrastructure, I can't talk tonight, infrastructure to support it makes more sense than not. So, if you've got an area downtown, Fairgrounds Road, where you have infrastructure, it does make sense to talk about those locations as being appropriate for more housing. But if doing so intrudes on the sense of, but I'm a single-family neighborhood, and that's kind of what I thought I was buying into, then you really have to be sensitive to, so what kind of multifamily is gonna fit there, which was why we introduced the whole idea of attached single-family, to try to at least not have people feel like the kind of place they thought they had moved into was suddenly gonna be changed on them, 'cause that's not really fair either. Incremental change you can do. So, you know.
So it would be interesting.
You have to decide what you can lead. I mean, I'm not here to lecture anybody.
It would be interesting to find out, like, Tenny Mountain Highway, like, if we want housing there or not.
Right.
And then what kind? Presumably not single-family detached on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Oh, no, no, you wouldn't wanna do that. But how much, you know, where would the multifamily go? And I imagine you don't wanna have too much competition taking place with your commercial zoning. I would think, you'd wanna think about where in that district you would be okay with multifamily going.
Well, it would be good to get some feedback on that.
Sure. Sure. What do you guys think? I keep looking over here, I'm looking over you.
Seems that a lot of, a lot, a lot of commercial developers wanna have a residential housing on an upper floor of their building.
So, uh, Andover, Massachusetts, classic example. Andover has a zoning district near the hot, near ninety-three that, um, they allow, it's a commercial district. What they actually allow as of right is just not, doesn't make any sense for anybody. So you have to get a special permit to build any sort of subst- substantial commercial project in that district.
Even though it's a commercial district?
E- exactly.
Interesting.
So that became the locus of one of their MBTA communities. Overly, you know about the MBTA Communities Law, right? Uh, you, you just don't wanna know. It's like Massachusetts towns that are anywhere near train stations have to zone for multifamily housing as of right, and it's been a big controversy, so.
And within, like, within walking distance of the train.
If you have train start service, which of course Andover does. So, what they ended up doing was saying, this na- this area meanwhile has not been developing, right? Developers are asking to build there. No one wants to go for a special permit, which up here is a special exception, because they don't wanna spend five years in court. So it became one of the areas where the town said, we'll allow mixed use here. But you, you only get the multifamily above if you'd actually do the commercial space on the ground floor. Well, people went apoplectic, because all of a sudden, you were saying, it's okay to have this larger base of commercial development as of right, but if you're not doing the housing, you still have to get a special permit. Well, duh, you know, if you want the mixed use, then you make it easier to do. It was a big policy challenge for them.
Really?
Yeah, it really was, because we're saying, we're making it harder for people to just do commercial development
Right.
than we are mixed use, but you gotta put the zoning district somewhere, so they had all these.
If it's, if it's proximate to the train, you want residential there.
Well, they were also trying to break the district up, so there wasn't all the MBTA Communities District in one part of town. So they, they tacked it onto small areas near both train stations and then stuck a bunch of it out by the highway. I mean, you know, everybody's making these tou- tough decisions, really, um, difficult. So, um, you know, you could think about mixed use, um, out there, or you might wanna think about, do you wanna allow freestanding multifamily, and then where do you allow that within the zone, so it's not taking up your commercial frontage on the highway?
Well, I guess the question is, well, our goal is to ask the community what they want.
Sure.
Not necessarily what we want.
And that would be a good exercise at a community meeting. You know, put up big maps and say, we want your feedback on these particular locations. Instead of just throwing a map out there and saying, what if, maybe identify particular locations, say, what do you, what do you think would make sense here?
I think that's a good place to start.
Yeah, we could do that.
And like we did last time, include the infrastructure on the map.
Yeah, mm, we could do that.
I keep coming back to this chat in the middle of our ICD, industrial commercial zone, which, not great, but at the same time, there's already commercial along the road frontage, and this is, the housing is gonna be kind of up on a hill behind it, which I don't see as being incompatible.
Well, I, just to add to that, though.
Yeah, but.
The, the one part that I find incompatible potentially is that the habitat portion of it, and he's talking about maybe splitting it between, like, work, um, market rate,
Yeah.
residential and habitat.
Right.
Residential.
Selling off housing lots at mar- for market rate housing.
The habitat part would be of, um, last I've heard, on like half-acre parcels, which is pretty loose.
Our habitat, our habitat likes to do single, likes to focus on single-family homes.
Which is a pretty, um, not dense, um, residential for that particular place. Um, otherwise, I see no problem with having residential there.
My, I, I guess the, the point I'm getting at, though, is that, like, it is our only zone for ICD, and if we're gonna allow housing there, it ma- it makes me wonder, like, that, the entire, like, you, you can only go so far south off Tenny Mountain Highway before you get into Hill, and I don't see that as being particularly valuable for industrial commercial development. And I almost think that a residential use in that area is actually probably more desirable, only because the, you can sit individual home sites along roads, like, I, I wonder if we shouldn't be reevaluating that area from a land use perspective and saying, okay, yes, we're going to allow ICD in here where it fits, but, you know, it, it really is better to be a, you know, especially the south side where it gets up the hill and is harder to develop, it almost makes more sense to keep, keep the, think about housing in that area. Like, there are some housing developments off of reservoir that drop down to the north and start to come down that hill, and there's almost an opportunity for connectivity there that I feel like we should take advantage of.
Well, if we just allow housing
Yeah.
and see what developers are able to put together, and see what entity of the town, again, of the community, if the community wants this.
I mean, we don't have the type of land that is highly desirable for commercial development. We don't have big, flat, sandy parcels where you can put up, where you can put up warehouses, right? Like, we're not going to have that in town.
Right.
You know, the, the, the easily developed parcels have been developed.
As is the case in many communities.
Yeah.
You know, you're left with the more difficult spots to develop, and so it raises, you know, it kind of really sort of compels you to think about, well, maybe the assumptions we made about this when we had easier to develop land made sense, but now they don't, so what are we doing? Probably a good time to have those discussions. So, I mean, I think we can design that community meeting to get at some of these things and, um, make it enjoyable for people, and, and bring to the community, you know, these are things that we heard from the six-word story, these are things we heard from the survey, and what do you think about this, and.
Yeah.
Maybe it can help us understand why people might have responded a certain way. That would be fine. So we can figure out the date for that. I'm just saying, I think, early November makes more sense.
Yeah.
If you need your first Thursday for work sessions.
I, I like the, I'm fine with that schedule change.
It's fine, okay. So you know what I think I'll do, Joseph? I think I'm just gonna modify that engagement plan and send you an updated copy, so.
Sounds good.
The dates are consistent. What else can I do for you? You, I know you've, in addition to maybe taking another look at Tenny Mountain or Fairgrounds Road, is there, what about the zoning you have to adopt now because of the new state law? Do you, do you want me to work on that, or? What are the things that, do you want me to help with those or not? I, I'm happy to do it, but just tell me what you need.
It's certainly, like, it, I lo- I love that you're asking. It certainly doesn't, like, I, I'm, I'm hesitant to ask you to do things that are too far outside of the scope of, of the screen.
But it's all land use.
There's a, there's the question about.
But this is, I mean, technically, this is housing, right?
And mathematically.
But there is the question about how we allow housing in highway commercial.
Yeah.
I think that, so, some of these pieces are pretty straightforward. We just need to change X to Y. Some of them, and I think the one that you spoke to is really the big example of this, is the highway commercial zone by right will have to allow multifamily.
Yeah.
That's the one where there's a lot of sort of open-ended parts to it. Do you require first-floor commercial? Do you say first-floor commercial unless you get a special exception? Do you allow multifamily and single-family attached, and single-family and two-family, or do you say just multifamily? Because the law says that zone now has to allow multifamily by right. You may require ground-floor commercial if you want to. So, I, I think that's kind of an open-ended question of.
I don't think that's a horrible thing to do.
To require commercial?
I don't, yeah, I wouldn't require that. We had this conversation after our last meeting.
We did.
I wouldn't require it that far out from the downtown core, but.
Good point. But, I mean, there are already businesses out there. In, in ground-floor
Yeah.
commercial can be, well, I don't know. There, there's already a lot of commercial out there. There's, there's a couple automotive service centers, there's the electronics repair, repair plays, I'm trying to.
What if you, what if you had density bonuses or something for mixed use? So allow the multifamily, which you're required to do, but maybe make it more attractive if the market's there for mixed use, and you make it more attractive because you've increased the develop, the, um, potential value of the project.
Is there water and sewer out there? There is, okay.
That's a possibility, just a thought.
Right, I, Three Lakes Landscaping and Tugetten Road.
No, no, I.
The highway commercial, thinking highway commercial.
I mean, I, I do understand towns being anxious about losing their commercial tax base. You know, it's important, if you're trying to actually have a balanced community, it's important to not lose sight of that.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna, like, I don't see this as losing commercial tax base. I think anything we can do that, I, I don't see in this community that our commercial tax base is actually higher value than red, like, I think the commercial assessments have been trending down in value, and residential assessments are trending up, so like, I, I don't see.
It's true everywhere.
I, I think anything we can do to encourage development of any type is going to build our tax base. I don't think it has to be commercial.
I, I would add that if we actually get approved for the, um, improvements to North Main, and even if just housing went in, that would all be walkable
Yeah.
to downtown and to existing businesses that would, don't necessarily have to be on the first floor, but can be interspersed with that.
Yeah.
And, um, I think that would help our business community and potentially be a little bit easier to do without the mandate for first floor.
I'm also just imagining a kind of strange fragmented, like, one mixed-use building out there.
Right.
And.
I would hope that there would be more than one.
Yeah, but I've seen towns develop like that, where you have this kind of weird sub-town.
We haven't maximized kind of our even core downtown yet.
Sure.
Um, with this type of development, and I think we'll be putting the cart before the horse to mandate it that far out.
There is, on the topic of pedestrian connectivity through there, there is a recent development that might help support that in that, that the, the bridge over the Baker was recently found to be structurally deficient, and the weight rating was changed from E two to.
Which bridge?
The, the Green Trestle Bridge over the Baker is now rated for ten thousand pounds.
Wow.
On Route three.
What's that?
On Route three.
Yeah.
The one by Common Man.
Yeah, the one right by Common Man is now rated for ten thousand pounds, so like, the, the state realizes that that is a shortcoming and, and is probably, I'm, I'm gonna guess that they're gonna have to replace that, and I'm hoping that they can add some width and capacity for pedestrian access and bike lanes when they do that.
And while they're doing it, they, they can bump up the timeline an hour.
Yeah, so.
Be nice.
That is, as I understand it, they've been, I believe that one had, the bridge itself has been now added to the ten-year plan. I think that's the.
That is the ten-year plan, right?
And it's somewhere in there, and our project that the town asked for, which is realigning the curb sidewalks and bike lanes to that bridge, and then on the Fairgrounds Road, but not including the bridge rehabilitation is up for discussion this year for addition to the end of the ten-year plan, but I think DOT, uh, sped up the process for the bridge rehabilitation, so I think that's sooner. If this other project were added to the ten-year plan, I think the order of operations would likely be the bridge rehabilitation is a few years before. I, I mean, again, this is not our bicy- bicycle pedestrian realignment project. It's not actually signed into law in the ten-year plan yet. It's under consideration this coming cycle. So there will be hearings around the state, and that will be kind of finalized, but it's not in there yet. But the bridge, as I understand, they've, they've kind of expedited adding the bridge rehabilitation for the.
May I ask for clarification?
That's a good, that's a good thing.
I thought the GASEM hearings about that were gonna be this summer. I thought the G A S A hearings about that were going to be this summer or so. Are they pushed back at this point or?
I, yes, I, I also had heard that as the timeline and they have not communicated with us any updates since then.
Summer's almost.
I agree. I, I have, they've not communicated out to the towns any updates. Usually they will let us know once they, because they always hold one in Plymouth. I mean, they hold them around the state and that's the opportunity for the town to weigh in and for members of the public, even who don't live in town, to weigh in and advocate for your town's project basically. And it's really an important, it, it, it's crucial, uh, because if there's not support at these hearings, they may, even if the regional planning commissions highly support or recommend the project, which our regional planning commission, Lakes Regional Planning, did put a pretty high, uh, vote of confidence in this white head realignment, North Main Street project. But, um, you know, we still need to get the hearings by the G A S A, which is the Governor's Advisory Commission on Intermodal Transit. And they hold, which is also a arm of the Executive Council, right? So they hold hearings around the state and they're going to be ultimately deciding what they're gonna put forward. And then that has to be actually signed into law. So it's a, it's a lengthy process and like you said, John, they, they have not communicated out to towns about the current timing for those hearings yet. But to, there, there is certainly, I think, movement or momentum towards those projects.
And this might help make the case, I guess, the feeling bridge.
It'd be serious business.
Priority.
Just suppo- it supports that North Main area or the, the, the highway commercial as, you know, potential viability for mixed use.
It sounds like it would be good to get more feedback from the community about what we'd like along North Main.
I do think that that.
Although actually I guess we have to do the rezoning there potentially, at least preliminary before then.
We need to.
But we can still think longer term about what we really wanna do there.
We need to allow multifamily as a right in that zone under the new state law.
Okay.
The other questions about other housing, other types of housing, mixed use, how much do you mandate it if you do at all? Um, you know, it's a, it's a good question and I think, you know, that, that is by my assessment, a lot of the, the A D U change, we just simply need to change what we need to change.
Sure, that's easy.
Same with, um, you know, the one about unrelated persons. We, we just quite simply need to remove the, the differentiation between related families and unrelated families and. And there's a couple of other ones that, um, you know, we talked about last time.
There's the parking one.
The parking one, we simply.
Need to like disinviguate from the, uh, commercial.
The commercial parking.
Right, we need to simp, right, we need to simply change residential parking uses to not more than one space per unit. But we do need to think more and, uh, have some thoughts on how we could potentially handle our maximum parking because that would be really, really challenging if our minimum is only one space per unit. Having a maximum of no more than 25% more than that is, is really gonna be tough. So I think differentiating large commercial facilities from any facility for the maximum, I think is key.
How do we, but I, that's a really good point.
My initial thought is you could quite simply say for non-residential parking facilities where the minimum parking requirement would be over 40 spaces as an example. You know, as kind of the differentiator, you just, you just say that that is the set of parking facilities to which like the maximum applies.
So it doesn't have to be that complicated in terms of how we change the zoning.
Yeah.
I like less complicated.
The big kind of open end one really is though, this, uh, multifamily by right in highway commercial. That's, that's very, it's a very broad.
Do you, do you want me to do some work on that? Put some stuff together for you?
Sure, yeah.
Could have time.
I mean, part, my, part of my gut tells me like as a first go-through, just allow multifamily.
Yeah.
And then actually get the feedback for the master plan and find out what we really wanna do there.
That's my instinct as well.
What are you guys over there saying? You're being very quiet. I wanna know what you're thinking.
We already allow commercial in that zone. I mean, is there a reason we can't allow multifamily over commercial?
Well, I think they're saying that you can do, you can require it that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, that's just my, my opinion is that I don't know if we need to require it right now.
No, right. I don't, I don't think we should require. I think, I think, I think flexibility is good in this market.
Right.
I agree. I'll second that one.
You agree?
Yeah, I do. I think it makes sense.
I'll be know we're gonna build, build six unit multifamily anyway, but who knows?
Do you want to consider something like multifamilies allowed, but there'll be an incentive for mixed use or not?
Personally, I would wait till we do the master plan to answer that. And I would just keep it as simple as possible for the first round and just follow state law.
But state law would allow you to do mixed use?
It would, yes.
Would allow you to, but it wouldn't incentivize it.
Right.
But I'm one person, so I don't know.
I mean, there's, 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 there's already some incentive for mixed use. I mean, you know, the, the, the fact that, you know, you can have alternate demand for parking in a mixed use facility helps reduce the developer's cost. Right, I mean, I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. Am, am I being too optimistic about that?
Another piece to this that is maybe worth, if the board really wants to do, like get into thought exercise here. In our zoning ordinance, it has always been interpreted that mixing multiple permitted uses in one building is allowed. But we could be more explicit about that and that's implied in many ways and has been the, the tradition. We even say in the, in the village commercial zone, you must have commercial on the ground floor if you have a residential use unless you get a special exception. So we, we certainly, uh, say without saying that mixing multiple uses in the same building is, uh, allowed. But we don't actually say mixed uses have this set of cra- this is what mixed use means for the purpose of this.
And here are the standards for it, yeah.
Which is a, which is a, I mean, we could continue to always interpret it the way we have, which is that if you meet the standards for use A and for use B, there's nothing that prevents you from having them in the same building. I mean, that's, that's traditionally how it's been interpreted here.
But my concern, thinking about zoning changes for 2026 is if we are considering still the Fairgrounds Road overlay and we're considering the Tenny Mountain overlay. And then we start to add more complications about how we define mixed use, uh, in the highway commercial or whatever. The whole thing could blow up.
Why? Because.
By, by adding complications, probably at this point fairly late in the process, as many people would understand it. I'm not sure I would understand that, but as many people would understand it. And the perception that we haven't had enough time to think through what that actually looks like and what to try and kind of souring us on other changes as well. And I'm, my gut tells me to kind of go streamline this time for some of the other changes and have a little bit more time to think about it before it pulls anything else down with it.
So it's, you know, it's entirely a, it's a policy decision. I guess I'm just, I think about all the times I've worked in towns where people get very anxious about losing commercial land. Because even though your values may be trending downward a little bit, as they are everywhere, the perception is that commercial development doesn't put as much demand on services as housing. So people get very hung up on this stuff. Now, maybe they're not here, which is fine. But if that threat of concern exists, that would be an argument for thinking about trying to make multi, make mixed use a viable option.
So that you can adhere to the state law without losing your commercial land.
Exactly, exactly.
So what would be an incentive to, um, to incentivize mixed use?
You'd have to allow more.
More units than six. More units than six or?
Oh, yeah.
The other, the other sort of.
That, that might be something worth considering is, is allowing more than six units in mixed use, commercial, residential.
You're not gonna get mixed use with six units.
No, I, 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 I know that and.
I, I, I was just talking to.
It's kind of a bone of contention, I'll say it. It's kind of a bone of contention with a lot of people. They don't wanna see more than six.
This is, this is where I'm going with, I'm, my, my concern about like putting something like this forward and like blowing the whole process up.
Yeah, I see.
Cause there's a lot of people in town, like six, six is like, it's like in the Bible somewhere, it says six and.
I, I happened to be talking to Steve Rand today and I asked him, I, I noticed like how big their, his building is. I was like, how many, how many apartments do you have up there? It's like, oh, there's eight. And that's just on the second floor.
That building was built probably before zoning.
Of course, of course, but it, it's very much part of this community. I mean, you know, it's.
And let's have that discussion as part of this process. And I'm not sure we're gonna push more than six through this zoning cycle without like going down in flames.
So I didn't think about that soon.
Having sufficient engagement first.
Yeah.
Wasn't thinking about that.
What's that?
If this, if six is such a religious number here, maybe it is better to just.
Double the Trinity?
Let it be multifamily. I was trying to think about a way to encourage the commercial base.
Yeah.
I think, I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna say how I feel about it. I'm just relaying what others' concerns are. But is it time now that there are people out there that would rather, are there more people that would rather see more than six? I mean, is that changing? Is that trend changing? I don't know that and that's a good topic of conversation, I think.
So we could, we could deal with that as part of that discussion maybe?
And just like all the other, let, let the people tell us because we don't know.
Sure.
I think if we're gonna make that change in this town, we're gonna need good evidence from this engagement process that says this is actually what we want.
Yeah.
Otherwise it's going to not go well.
Okay.
Exactly, and that's, that's what I mean. It's got to come from the people and this is, this is why we're here. We're representing them and we need to give them the opportunity. It's my opinion, it's, it's whatever they want.
Right, right.
The last time around, we, we saw the split. We saw the, the survey go out and everybody said no. And then we saw the visual preferences survey and people were like, well, maybe.
Yeah, the challenge is how do you then express that in zoning?
Yeah.
So that they don't end up with the big box that they're afraid of.
Right.
Um, and, and it's hard to say to people, that can be done. I mean, it's, that zoning exists, but until they see it, you know.
It needs to be presented.
Yeah, visualization is very, very helpful.
And I think if we rushed it, it would backfire.
I see, okay. I, I wasn't thinking about the six.
They know.
But let's bring it up and see what people say. I think that's fine.
I think that's fair.
We can always amend it later if we need to, when we have more information.
So you have me for seven more minutes because it's three hours home and I'm not staying here tonight. I, I cannot stay here tonight. I cannot. I wish I could, but I can't.
We're, we're happy to have you for seven more minutes, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I just looked at the clock and I told my husband I was leaving here at 7:30 like.
Um.
What, what else do we need to talk about on your agenda?
Anything that they really need to do.
How do we feel about the Tenny Mountain overlay district and the work we've done on it so far? And we have made some changes that we've discussed. We've discussed quite thoroughly. I feel really good about.
Mostly around residential.
Yeah, I feel really good about our discussions, but maybe since you're the original crafter of the legislation.
Just take a look at it.
You could take a look at what changes we've made.
Sure.
That's the only other thing I can think of right now.
It needs to do what you want it to do, not what I want it to do. Um.
Well, but in case we've done something totally wacky.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to take a look at it.
The biggest issue that we had was when we started to think about allowing housing outside the village core. We were trying to think about how to conceptualize density overall and what that would look like and trying to visualize those numbers. And we picked something that I think is good, but it, it might be good to have another set of eyes on that.
I mean, the whole reason I did it that way was to try to address the concerns that had been stated at this table.
Yeah.
About it's just gonna be covered with housing.
Right.
So I thought, well, there's a way to, to make sure that's not what happens in the overlay and here it is. But if that concern is not really as dramatic as or significant as it seemed at the time, this is, I want this to work for you. It's like, I just want it to work for you.
I'll give you the, the long story short on it was a concern that if we don't allow it, they're just gonna like subdivide the crap out of the land and have that outside the actual planned unit development. And so we might as well have more control over that by having it in the planned unit development. And so we said it needs to be clustered and it gave an overall density of the whole plot and.
Got it.
Yeah.
Bit of a middle way.
I'm good. Joseph, you could just send me wherever, whatever markup you have.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd love to. I mean, I shouldn't do this, right? It's not my town. God, I would love to see it.
We value, we, we value your input.
Oh, I appreciate it.
If you're willing to share it, I'm happy to.
Happy to, we'll take it.
Yeah, we'll take it for sure.
Well, I mean, should we look at Fairgrounds Road two again and think about whether there's anything in that that needs to be changed?
Okay.
That's okay.
You think there's stuff that needs to be changed in it?
Um, I'm not, I don't know. I, I think we're not done with it.
There's one piece.
Two. Please, stop holding back. No, seriously, do you, do you have something that you're prepared to share? Like I, I, you have great, you have great contributions.
I say you do, I mean.
And you have, you represent a, a portion of the population we need to hear from. I, I really wanna hear what you're thinking about that. If, if not tonight, sometime.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have anything to add just at this point.
All right.
It's, it's, it's bubbling.
Fairgrounds Road, you have basically three sections.
Yep.
You've got, you've got the more heavily developed section, which ends at Beach Hill Road.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then you've got water and sewer up to the chainsaw shop, basically. And then you have the agricultural, you know.
Agriculture, agricultural and hill.
So.
And the overlay ends before the chainsaw shop, I believe.
Like, once you get past there, it's, the north side is all hill and the, and then it gets narrow and wet.
Fairgrounds is gonna be developed.
Joseph, just sometimes plot, just tell me the address of the chainsaw shop so I know why.
At one point we had a developer that wanted to put 60 houses on the Fairgrounds. And then the co-op got it.
Yeah, I have the co- I have that, that plan. I think it actually may have been approved and just they never built it or met the conditions or something like that, but I, I, I.
I'll play with it, I mean.
Then the co-op got it.
Um, Joseph, what were you gonna say?
Oh, just that the one thing with Fairgrounds Road is that we will need to, the, the, the last text that we had was that accessory dwelling units are a special exception. And we're only to just.
So we have to update that as per the state law change. That's, I always remember some of the change.
Okay. I will, just shoot me the current, wherever the current state of those is and, um, and meanwhile I'll get you more supplies. All right. Anything else we need to talk about tonight? I know we need to settle on a date for November, but we don't have to do that this evening. You guys can debate that and I'll give you a couple of days that I know.
I love the six minute stories. I can't wait to get those out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
It is.
Thank you. I thought it might be kind of fun and again, it's just a different, less loaded way for people to think about housing, so. That's a good one. Getting back on the highway. Thank you very much.
Driving through Boston.
You need to get out of here now. I mean that in the most respectful way too, though, like you're gonna really dread it.
Did you drive up?
In five minutes it goes by, you're gonna be going, okay.
At like 3:30 and now you're gonna leave, go directly back?
I, I actually try to do this so I've got a good reason to stay here, but I can't, I just can't tonight. I've gotta go home.
It's gonna be easier going back than it was.
It usually is, but you know, road construction projects get in the way.
Yeah.
And you'll just be driving along thinking, huh, great, right? And then all of a sudden you see the sea of red lights ahead and you know what's coming. It's lane drop, it's.
That could, that can happen at, anywhere at any time in the summer.
Lordy, it's just.
Does it bother you to drive at night?
It's like that.
That gives me all.
I've been doing it for so long.
Otherwise the motion of the car on a highway.
I'm not wild about it, but I, it's, I have to do it, so I just.
The city, the city isn't so bad. You got enough lighting there? You can see the buildings anyway.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, I always like going through the cities with light.
It's, it's pretty driving through.
You have to drive right through Boston downtown.
Yeah, I just go right through the.
Prefer the traffic, keep it like alert and like.
Oh, Lord.
Drive south and.
I don't like driving past Tilton. I have to go to Concord, it's like, oh, no.
The worst part about trying to drive south is like a Thursday night before a long weekend.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because they're all going to a place that means they have to go by my town. It's called, they have to go to Cape Cod. So I'm not in the Cape, I'm on the South Shore, but you should just see Route three south. It's just amazing. It's nuts. People are crazy. Yeah, they don't wait till Friday now. They go Thursday night.
Oh, Lord.
Where the hell am I? Thursday night.
Thursday night.
I, I regret anytime I go to Manchester for work on Friday afternoons, cause Friday nights driving north are-
They're bad, yeah.
They're always terrible.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, good to see you, we're going home.
Nice vacation.
Do you wanna hand carrying things out, or are you okay?
No, I'm good, cause I'm leaving almost everything here with you.
It's ours, it's ours.
Joseph, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow about additional stuff and-
Sounds great.
Give your devices in a Faraday cage for the cruise, so they have no connectivity.
Pardon me?
I said leave your, leave your devices-
We don't have anything else.
I can't, I've actually got a big meeting with Groton, Connecticut next week, I'm like, so-
She doesn't vacation, actually, she works in a different place.
Yeah, I guess.
In the bag, there are two tabletop easels.
Okay.
In case you need to stand them up somehow, I wish I could have gotten more, but I, they just didn't have them.
No, that's, that works, that's great, thank you.
Alright, guys, have a good rest of-
Drive safely.
Yes, thank you, alright, take care.
Bye.
See you later.
So do we, just to, to sort of turn back to this quickly, um, with the traveling display, do we like the idea of perhaps putting it in a central location like Town Hall with a little sign up sheet and I can email the board when it's ready and people can come in and so I'm bringing it to, you know, X location for X time, or is there a different way we wanna handle the traveling, the traveling setup?
The only thing I wanna avoid is us not communicating with each other in that, you know, like if I set aside two hours of my Saturday, I don't wanna accidentally take it from someone else who's also-
Why don't we, Joseph, you are a master of Google Sheets, you wanna set up a Google Sheet where we could sign up to take them out and we could all put our, we could just, I mean, at least they-
Log in beforehand, so you don't just show up and it's gone.
We'll just have to be careful, no discussion on any sort of Google product or-
No cor, no forum on the Google Sheet.
Forum discussion, so-
Right, just, just to coordinate.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, or we could even have, you know, a sheet where if you wanna have it for a time, I can, you can email me and then I can let you know what's on the sheet, so that way we don't have that concern if we're worried about too many people typing on the sheet.
Right.
Why don't we do that, then there will be nobody-
No haziness.
Problem.
Sounds good, and then, you know, just shoot us an email and, and let us know, I want it fixed, and then we'll just block it off and keep everybody in the loop.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Is that for picking up the card, did you talk about picking up the cards, are these going in the box?
Yep.
Yeah, for, if you wanted to bring it somewhere for-
Yeah, I was gonna say, wouldn't that be the smart thing to do, is like, go, I mean, I would not-
Not just for picking up cards, but also for going and bringing the whole thing to, like Hannafords or something.
I'm gonna provide one counterpoint, which is if we all get to sign up for which part of this we wanna do, then the kind of like, we just might not do it. And sometimes the kind of social pressure of like actually assigning it to one another, um, during times when we actually have time, or with, with the flexibility of when we wanna do it, but like saying, you're gonna do this, you do this, sometimes could, can yield more actual follow through than, hey, like when you get a chance to sign, sign this out and like, yeah, I'll do it next week, and it never happens. I'm just putting that out there, I'm not trying to like be a pain in the ass, but like-
So what's your point?
So how would we do it all otherwise?
Um, I mean, we, we could come up with a list of places where we want it to be, and each one of us volunteer to follow through with that.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe still at our discretion of when we do it, maybe with the same sign up sheet, but at least this way we can kind of hold ourselves accountable to actually do it.
Sure.
Well, that- It'll be available, when, when, when the first day, weekend starts.
So I think Judy's recommended start the-
August eighteenth, wasn't it?
Yep, I think that was the one.
August eighteenth.
There's also the, the complication of getting permission, like if we wanted to go to Hannafords, we wanted to go to Mark Bassett, we have to ask.
Or check, check with the store manager and see if they mind you setting up a table up front for a couple hours, just to show up to it.
I don't even know where you do it, Mark Bassett.
Yeah, wherever, wherever somebody wants to go, just liaise with that place, if you need help, support liaising with the place, I, I can do my best as well, just let me know, if you have a relationship with them, you know how to get in touch, that's, that's fine, I mean, in many places, well, you know, just at, at Judy's request, I had reached out to the senior center, they were very happy to be involved, most of the time, it seems that if you just let a, a, a business, a place know that you're doing something, you know, for the town, it's, it's not a commercial enterprise, you're just trying to do it as a part of a community engagement, they, they tend to be pretty open to it, that's the impression I get.
Yeah.
We're to the pretty narrow demographic, um, the library's a bit broader.
Yep.
Although probably catches a lot of families and seniors.
Town Hall in front of the town clerk's office is kind of where we were thinking, um, for the town hall.
All the car registrants.
I'm, I'm just kinda trying to figure out, those three places, how many demographics were filtering out by putting it in those places?
And the transfer station or recycling.
I like the transfer station.
That's the most democratic place.
Yeah, and so you could, so we could definitely-
Waste management.
I mean, those, it sounds like those are the four sort of fixed ones that everybody was comfortable with, though obviously-
If they agree to it.
Uh, the recycling is the only one we, we haven't got it okay with, but I can certainly reach out to recycling.
Another account service, but they should probably go-
So if you're standing around talking with some friends and you just happen to say, would you mind writing down on a piece of paper, six words that mean home to you, would that be okay? And then just take the card and bring it in?
Yeah, yeah, sure, and there's no, there's really no-
There's no rules that we have to abide by.
Works for that person and that-
Actually, can I just say one thing?
Okay, storytelling. Please.
It might be good if we have the, like, graphic of that.
Yep.
Or something to have that available to us, in case we do something like that, we don't like word it in a leading way, even unintentionally.
Judy did offer to make a flyer that would describe the activity.
Like a flyer version, that would be good, yeah.
Which would describe kind of what the purpose is, what you do, how it works, where they are.
Yeah.
Didn't she say something about, there's gonna be a JPG version?
Yes, yeah.
So I immediately imagined, what if the planning board had an Instagram profile, I'm just like-
Some do.
I am, do some.
It, it gets, yeah, I mean, you, you just have to be careful not to engage board discussions.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I mean, I'm saying it seems far fetched.
Can you advertise it on the town website?
It's how people get information.
We definitely can, yeah, and we can-
Social media.
Yep, we can let people know where the displays will be too.
And there, there are groups that have popped up, that popped up around town meeting last year, like there's a Plymouth, Plymouth Plans Facebook page that's managed by a community member.
That's true, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, anything that we create as a town is just public, so if any-
Taxpayers of Plymouth kind of thing, you know, any of those-
Any person that a group wants it, it's all public, anyone could take anything that we create and distribute it to their own.
Do you need to make an ad on PBTV? Brad, you wanna make an ad on PBTV?
Late night ad too.
Look around town.
One for the early, one for the, one for the daylight hours and one for the, for the, for the late night crowd.
I think we should do it, it sounds awesome.
We do, we do have an airport, we can pull a banner this guy.
Oh, yeah, banner ad. We're laughing, but I'm kinda serious.
I'm, I'm kinda, I figured that. I don't play now to know what you were serious about, that's for sure. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay, think about it, think about it, yeah.
It is awesome.
So is anybody, are we done with that, or we, do we have any more questions or comments or anything that?
Product discussion.
Okay, how about any unfinished other business from board members or planning staff?
Can I just, uh, ask a question to the board about, um, when Judy was talking about rearranging the schedule, um, there's nothing, if, if we as a board feel really good about, let's say Judy comes back with notes about the Tennymount Overly District, but we feel really good about it, we could, right now, say we wanna send this to town meeting and just have public hearings early, earlier than we did last year, is that correct?
I think there's a timeline for public hearings, but procedurally, I think we can send it whenever we want, I mean, make that agreement.
There is the complication of, if, if we approve something to go to town meeting.
Uh-huh.
It basically, if, it, it, it gets treated as if it's in effect until it gets voted on at town meeting, but again, it only, like if someone were to file a building permit application.
Oh.
It would, they would have to consider the proposed change.
Oh, interesting.
Compliance with that proposed change, as if it is approved until it's voted on.
There is, there is a timeline, there is a time limitation on that.
Yeah, there is, you can't, you can't do it like the beginning of the year and let it, is it ninety days?
It's ninety or a hundred and twenty days, something to that effect, and I think, yeah, like you said, it kicks in at the building permit stage, so if there was a building permit requested for something which is, uh, allowed today but would not be allowed under a new zoning, for example, the building inspector would have to hold off on issuing that permit until the amendment is either approved or denied, and-
Oh, okay, so it can get sticky.
So, only if it, and it's especially key if something would become not allowed, uh, that's currently allowed.
Right, right.
That prevents a stampede.
Yeah, it, it could be a-
Problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's also worth noting, along similar vein, um, that Plymouth is fully within the law, but we do not follow standard procedure.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of how we do, um, the process or go forward with the process of, of putting something to town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, more typically, towns will vote to put something to town meeting and then hold the public hearings to have a discussion of what is going to town meeting, as opposed to holding the, um, hearings first and then sending to town meeting.
Interesting.
Um, and there's nothing in the RSA that says you have to do it one way or another, um, but it's usually implied to be the other way, and most towns apparently do it the other way.
That's interesting.
I prefer people's feedback in case we need to make this change.
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, I mean, regardless of what we do, ideally, we should, we should be getting that feedback all along anyway, if we're doing our job right, which is hard.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right.
Um, and then the town, the hearings become more about kind of hashing our way through how we feel about these changes, and then that informs our vote, but not what we actually send.
Pros and cons, I would say, right?
Which, which, which also has its benefits as a way of doing it, um.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Anyway, just, I'm just putting that out there.
Well, that's, thank you.
Molly, you had a question when we were looking at the minutes, you said you wanna talk-
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, it was about, um, so these laws that have gone into effect now.
Yep.
And, but we're in this in-between zone of, we haven't changed our zoning.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, do we know how we have to deal with this?
Yes.
Don't, 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 don't some of those laws have different, different active, or different dates on which they become required?
They do.
Yeah, some of them are now.
Some are immediate, some are sixty days, some are next year, so the ones that are immediate are sixty days, we have, you know, and it's a, I, I, you know, the reason kind of we, we touched on it last time was, it's a, it's a strange situation where the planning board, us as staff, myself and Tom, the building inspector, have, uh, you know, and all of us at Town Hall have an obligation to sort of enforce the, the version of the law that's adopted by the town, though not if that is illegal, because state law clearly supersedes local zoning, the question is, what is the correct procedure for doing that, because typically, it's not appropriate for us as town staff to not follow what the town has adopted, but we did receive, and so, all this to say, we wanted to make sure that we were within legal, you know, that we were acting lawfully, whatever we did, and it, and we did get legal confirmation that the appropriate thing to do in this case where our zoning is expressly, clearly preempted by a change in state law, we need to just follow the state law and disregard the zoning provision, so for example, accessory dwelling units, effective whenever that goes into effect, um, we cannot require, we, we should not be sending people to get a special exception, which seems logical enough, uh, because of course, state law supersedes local zoning, but we just wanted to make sure we had all of our ducks in a row before we started telling people to disregard a provision of local zoning, and, and we did get legal confirmation there.
And, and, I mean, to that extent, like, we could propose a zoning change to be compliant with the state law and the town could vote to deny it, in which case, the, the town could still, the, you know, the town staff would still have to comply with the state law and enforcement.
Yeah.
And every year, those come up, and lots of people vote against them.
You could, yeah.
Yeah. Inducing a kind of like double thing.
So, I mean, in, in reality, the situation we're in now, like, we, we kind of, to Molly's question, you know, we, yeah, we, we are in good hands with Joseph and, and Tom in the enforcement section.
I mean, I figured it was gonna be something like that.
All we can do is propose the change and put it forth to town, and hopefully they will understand the benefits of having our zoning in alignment with state law.
Yep.
Okay, um, any public comments, anybody online? No one here.
We lost our one online person.
I, I got one thing I'd like to say, uh, I interact with quite a few people in town and, and the hottest topic I keep hearing is property taxes, the pain.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Definitely check with that one, as long as she there.
And as, and as Phil noted, um, the tax burden is falling more towards residential property owners at this point, and I do wonder on the select ward side and budgeting side, if there's a way of kind of rebalancing that, um, between commercial and residential land.
My understa- My, my, both Zach and I had the question when we interviewed the assessing company, and they basically said, you know, they're assessing standards that, that base the value of commercial property on recent transactions, and they're kind of bound to those standards.
Well, not in terms of assessing, but in terms of how you apply property taxes in commercial versus residential, and I know there's mixed views as well.
I, I have, I have suggestions about that. Seriously, no, seriously, I, I don't know, I don't know if towns can do it, but I think, uh, an exemption for your primary residence would go a long way to eliminating the burden for your own residence.
Yeah.
And it would shift the burden to second homes and businesses, you know, by default, if, if you were allowed to take a, an exemption of fifty percent of the value of your home on your primary residence only.
Yeah.
That tax burden still has to be raised from the town, and it would put more of that, so, so the, the assessed value of those primary homes would go down, and it would shift more of the, the money to be raised to second homes and businesses.
Cause it is a real issue right now with the real estate market how it is, that-
Yeah, I agree.
And the fixed includes where they are.
Residential owners are getting more and more of the bill.
And it's, it's not just the assessment of residential properties becoming more valuable relative to commercial, but it's also, you know, there's been a, a steady downshifting of costs from the state to towns.
Of course, yeah.
Hmm.
So, what-
Nonprofit properties in this town are just, they're gaining, we're getting-
And Plymouth is, is uniquely disproportionate by the number of nonprofits in town, but, I mean, technically, any town can have nonprofits, we just have a lot.
We do have a lot, and it keeps, is gaining.
And they provide us with benefits, but they also provide that obvious back, um, word, it's too late for me to find at this point, but, yeah, drawback.
No, that is, that is a hot topic, that's everybody's concern and-
It is, I've heard it a lot.
You know, for, for years, there, there were a lot of things that were covered at the state level that-
Yep.
The state has stopped covering and, and led them fall to, to towns and-
On, on a planning note, the regional planning commissions have been defunded.
The what?
It is defunded.
They, they, they had a pittance previously, and that has been removed.
So they're not gonna exist?
No, they will, most of them will continue to exist, cause they can make money other ways, but the money they were getting from the state to help them exist.
Okay.
Is going away.
And, and I presume we pay dues to be part of those organizations?
We do, and they also provide, provide guy, help and guidance with master planning projects and stuff like that to make money, and they have grants.
Consultants.
Um, so the money they did get, they would use as like leverage for matching funds for grants and other things, um, which makes getting grants harder, cause you don't have the matching funds anymore.
Hmm.
And, and just general operating costs, and that's, just makes, most of them are not, that's gonna go away probably, but it does make it that much harder for the regional planning commissions to continue to function.
And they do, they are, I mean, they're, they are a great asset for communities and, and, you know, we, we rely on them, when, when the last town I worked in, we relied on them even more intensely, because we didn't have planning staff, we relied on a circuit rider from one of the regional planning commissions to come out and act as planning staff like once a week, so it was, you know, there, there are lots of small towns that rely on circuit rider services from regional plannings organizations too, I, it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
Does anybody have anything else? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to move that Sue has been an excellent chair tonight.
Second.
Thank you.
I move, we adjourn.
Wait, we have a motion on the table, a second.
Oh, it was seconded.
Alright, my, 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 my motion was symbolic, we don't have to vote on it.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Neil.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that are not in favor?
You too.
Have extensions? It's adjourned.